Hello, my name is Jim Marks. I'm a township supervisor for North Coventry Township in Chester County, Pennsylvania. On March 23rd, the Board of Supervisors elected to hold their normally scheduled meeting virtually using the Zoom conference software out of concerns of the COVID-19 virus and reducing risk to our board members and also to the public. The authority to hold such meeting virtually comes from the Sunshine Act, which permits, under an official emergency declaration, that prevents boards from meeting in person, that a teleconference or virtual meeting could be held as long as reasonable public comment and access was made available, which we did, and you'll see at the end of this video. This was the agenda for the meeting. Meeting was scheduled to start exactly at 7:00 PM. It was our intention to record the meeting in its entirety, but unfortunately, we had some technical difficulty, namely, I forgot to hit the record button until a few minutes into the meeting. So I will just recap quickly what happened prior to the recording starting, and that was the review of the meeting minutes from our March 9, 2020 meeting, and also the review of the bills to be paid, and also bills that had been paid and payroll that had been paid since our last meeting. Both of those were unanimously approved by the board. The next item on the agenda was the hearing for the Act 209 update. I opened that hearing stating that the hearing had been advertised twice for two successive weeks. The Advisory Committee had met on July 29, 2020, and had a presentation from McMahon Associates on suggested modification of the Township's capital improvement plan and suggested modifications of the traffic impact fee. The Advisory Committee approved both modifications and forwarded them to the Board of Supervisors for review. John York of McMahon Associates was present on the webinar meeting that we held, and he gave a summary of the update. This is where the recording then picks up, so at this point, I'm going to turn it over.
As we looked in the capital improvement plan, we looked at the projects, their schedules, what went into making the cost estimates, if there were any projects that were completed from the capital improvement plan, and to make sure that projects just made sense still after several years. So that was our scope, and so it was a pretty quick process once we got our committee together. So we did meet with the committee on January 29th. As Jim mentioned, we did have a quorum, and those members present did vote unanimously to forward the recommendations of our findings, which I will go over in a minute, to the board for approval. So in looking at our capital improvement projects, there were really no significant changes to any of the previously recommended projects. I would say the one thing that we did look at was, I guess, new standards, if there were any projects, and one of the key new standards is ADA accommodations. So if there was a project where PennDOT would require ADA ramps, for example, if we were to be making some widening improvements, then we did include that in the fee, whereas we may not, and most likely did not, include that in the previous capital improvement So we have a couple tables that I'm going to go through quick. I'm not going to go through every project because they are essentially the same as before, but the capital improvement plan is broken up into three sections or three conditions, and the first is the existing conditions, and that's, the township is required to bring up, to improve any deficiencies within the existing roadway network. And basically, this table highlights those existing deficiencies and what their costs are. And then we used the previous traffic forecast, and we developed future pass-through traffic. So that's all the traffic that's generated outside of the transportation service area. There are two within the township, the eastern and western service area. And essentially, the same as before, the western service area, because it is the more rural and less developed section of the township, there are no capital improvements and there is no fee. So that has not changed with this update. So as a rough outline, the eastern service area is roughly everything east of Laurel Wood Road. It meanders a little bit, but there is a map in the original, or the last capital improvement plan. So traffic generated in the western service area becomes pass-through traffic in the eastern service area. And again, we have a handful of projects. These, again, remain very similar to the previous tables from the existing capital improvement plan. And then when we get to future, I had that in the wrong order, or actually, no, I think I scanned the wrong document, but apologize about that. But in the memo that I did hand out, there is a development table, which I will forward as a follow-up to this meeting, but there are several improvements, and again, they remain the same as before. And what we did was, we also looked at the project schedules, and we set those to the year 2030. So the township has now, with this capital improvement plan, about 10 years to complete the projects, secure funding, or again, a deferral project if you just can't meet the schedule requirements, and there isn't an immediate need. So the costs, in the breakdown, we really did focus when we reviewed the construction cost and what are current unit costs. We aren't allowed to assume escalation. So that's where the bulk of our review was done, and then, again, we accounted for any reconstruction standards. So my Zoom meeting window is popping up over on the table. There we go. All right, so the existing capital improvement costs came out to about, just under 1.4 million. The future pass-through costs came out to a little over 800,000. The future development costs came out to a little over 13 million, 13.2 million. And in total, that put us a little bit over $15 million in capital improvements. So in terms of the updated fee, as before, the traffic impact fee is based on new trips generated by development during the peak hour from the previous land use assumptions report and roadway sufficiency analyses. Again, those are two components of the Act 209 that we did not update. There were 1,668 new PM peak hour trips forecasted, so that, those are the development trips that are going to be subject, that make up the impact fee calculation. I just wanted to note that there is a limitation on what can be assessed to a developer on state roadways, it's no more than 50% of the project cost. So we do take that into account when we calculate the fee. And then I do also want to note, and this is similar to our last capital improvement plan, there are a couple projects where, one, we were limited by right-of-way, so if we were to meet the required preferred level service to upgrade the intersection, we would really be having severe property impacts, maybe actually even taking buildings. So what we did in those instances, we did recommend upgraded signal technology as a means to still improve the intersection, but not pass along that full cost to a developer, particularly because the project would probably never get built. And then along Route 100, there is, we are calling for two lanes of tra, or two lanes in each direction, traffic heading up from Hoppaker Road and tying into the existing section near the town center shopping center. But that will have a significant cost because there's a bridge structure there, so we assume that that would really be a regional project that would be on the capital improvement plan, so we did not take the full cost of that project into account. We did assess a small impact fee for a portion of that to possibly act as a local match in order to get the project advanced beyond the scope of what the project, or what the township could do alone. So when all is said and done, the development capital improvement plan, there's a little bit over 5 million, that can be, almost 6 million, that can be assessed to the future development, and if you divide that by the 1,668 trips, the new peak hour, I'm sorry, the new traffic impact fee is $3,477 per trip, and that is up from the existing impact fee of $2,352. And just wanted to point out that that is, I don't have a full list of all recent impact fees, but anecdotally, that is in keeping with more recently completed Act 209s and updates. And again, these findings were summarized in the February 6, 2002 memo. So that is my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any board members have any questions for John? Any members of the public have any questions for John? Hearing and seeing none. At this time, I'm going to close the hearing. The board members have copies of two resolutions in their packet, which we're going to take action on them separately. The first resolution is a motion to adopt, or to adopt the resolution approving modifications to the capital improvement plan. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Jim.
Spencer makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harvey, seconds. Is all in favor? Rebecca, are you in favor?
Yes.
Harvey, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rick? Rick, you're muted. Hold on a second. I lost Rick there. Rick, you're on mute there. And I'm in favor.
How about now?
There you go. You there?
Yeah.
All right. And are you in favor for the first resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. Second motion is to adopt the resolution approving the revised traffic impact fee for the eastern transportation area to $3,477 per trip. Do I have that motion?
I move.
Who was that? Rick? And do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Spencer seconds it. Rebecca, are you in favor?
Yes.
I am in favor. Harvey, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Spencer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, very good. We're going to move on to the next agenda item.
Hey, Jim? Sorry, real quick, I'm going to drop off then, but just wanted to say, if the township needs anything, don't hesitate to reach out to myself and McMahon. These are extraordinary times, but we're trying to serve our clients. And just a real quick minute to, I guess, officially say goodbye to Kevin Hennessy. I'm probably not going to see him in a meeting many times soon, so I just wanted to officially say that, and I will definitely miss working with Kevin. He was a standout guy, and will be missed. So thanks, everybody, be safe.
Thank you, John. Okay, next, next item on the agenda is the approval of the paving at Fernbrook. And I know this is something we talked about months ago in our last meeting, which seems like a lifetime ago. We asked that this be put back on the agenda for tonight. I'm going to suggest that we table this at this time, due to the uncertainty of the times that we're in. We don't know what the impacts of this are truly going to be financially this year. I would suspect that as we sit here tonight, more than half of our residents, or half of our residents may be out of work tonight. So at this point, it would seem irresponsible for me, you know, to spend $10,000 on this. I'd open it up to see what the others say.
I concur with you, Jim.
Rick, you okay with that?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, and Spence, you're okay as well?
Yes, I am.
We've gone this many years without it, I think, and the list of priorities goes, unfortunately, tonight, this one's going to fall down pretty far. Hopefully, you know, times will change and things will improve, and we can revisit this at some point, but for right now, we're just going to table it. Okay, I'm going to move on to the coronavirus or COVID-19 update. I just want to bring everybody kind of up to speed on what has happened in the last two weeks. As we met two weeks ago, I don't think any of us had any idea of what we were just hours away from experiencing. Essentially, on a couple of days after that meeting, it was Wednesday, I believe, that was the 11th, that really was the first indication that we had here at the township, that something was soon going to happen, and it was going to be big. Kevin called me that night, and Chief Scher, at the time, he was still here, called me that night. We had an issue with a potential exposure to this virus to one of our officers in a training session. Fortunately, that worked out not to be serious, but that really was the starting point for everything that was about to happen. Couple of days later, on the 13th, which was just so coincidentally, unfortunately, was Chief Scher's last day, we were to hold a, we were supposed to hold a party, a going away party, for the police department staff to kind of say goodbye to Chief Scher. We ended up canceling that for obvious reasons, and unfortunately, we couldn't celebrate his nearly 30 years with us and his retirement as he moved on. At some day in the future, sometime in the future, hopefully, the opportunity will come that we can all get together and share that experience, but it was prudent at that time that we canceled that event, which we did. So coincidentally, or not so coincidentally, that day was the day that things really started to come to light, the reactions that we needed to take, which we did fairly quickly. Collectively, as a board, we canceled all future township committee and boards and commission meetings until further notice. We closed the public restrooms in the parks due to the concerns from the virus. Later that day, Owen Jolie Roberts closed their schools for a period of two weeks. At that time, we made our township office a hands-free zone, but it was still open to the public. The police began taking precautions, and maybe Matt will speak to this in a few minutes about what kind of precautions they're taking, but that was the first day that they were sort of put on notice that certain things had to be considered in making calls. It was, over that weekend, that I first got the idea of holding this meeting virtually. It seemed to me that it was pretty clear that we were headed down this path, so I started looking into options to hold this meeting virtually. It was over that weekend that all in-dining restaurants were asked to voluntarily close by the state. It's not a township order, it's not an order the township can give, that came from the state, and the state, from the governor's office, and the governor also asked that all non-essential businesses voluntarily close. That was approximately March 14th or March 15th over that weekend. Monday morning, the township did close the township building. We closed it to the general public, tried to isolate our staff as best we could. Certainly, the health and welfare of our township staff and our police department is our utmost concern, as well as all emergency personnel. So we took these steps to prevent danger to them, prevent danger to the public, but we did continue to hold business as best we could through phone and email. Later that day, on the 16th, we signed, which was last Monday, we signed a first emergency declaration. This declaration gives the township some abilities to take action and later get funding for those actions. We're going to go over the declaration in a few minutes, but that was the, we did sign that on the 16th. It was signed electronically, it was not signed in person. I did send it out and had all the board members sign that digitally, which they did. The next day, Tuesday, the 17th, was really the first day we started, we began having conversations about mutual aid agreements with our police department and what we were going to do in a worst-case scenario. We've been through many trainings for limerick and worst-case scenarios, but nobody in anybody's wildest dreams ever saw this coming or prepared for it. So it became clear to us that mutual aid agreements were going to be important, which we are still in the process of working out. I'm going to let Dan Segger speak to that, perhaps, and maybe even Matt can speak to that in a second. But the mutual aid agreements are essentially agreements with our neighboring municipalities. We're looking at municipalities here in Chester County, but also part of the regional, essentially the regional planning commission, that group of eight municipalities, trying to reach out to them to come up with some kind of mutual aid. When you have a, when you have a police department that's small, you know, when you have 12 to 13 officers, having one of those or two of those become affected by this and potentially quarantined can be catastrophic and quickly affect the whole department, leaving us with nothing. So we had to start considering mutual aid agreements, which we did. On the 20th of last week, March 20th, Kevin and I just started discussing transitioning of the road crew to an alternate schedule. The alternate schedule would be in three guys work one week, three guys work the next week. The board was brought into that conversation, all agreed that that was a good idea, that was something that was responsible, so that we separate our road crews, so that they're not all working together and potentially could infect, you know, the entire road crew. It was for their safety and for the good of the township, that we break them apart and work them alternately. So that was, that was Friday. We also had discussions about moving the staff on the admin side of the township building to a work-at-home, which Kelly and Denise are currently doing, although Kelly does come in to pick up mail and do some minor things, but the, you know, this idea is the social distancing thing, we're trying to keep our employees apart from each other while still conducting businesses effectively as we can. We are going to continue that as we go forward. So that covers the past crazy. It's hard to believe, it's only been 12 days since this all started happening. There are a couple of things that I think we need to kind of affirm that happened over that, over that period of time. And I'm going to address, ask this of the board, at this point, it does seem prudent, and we didn't take official action at any of our meetings, that we continue with keeping, with canceling any non-essential township meetings, committee meetings, board meetings, anything like that, and to keep the township building closed to the general public. Is everyone in favor of that?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to support that?
Yeah, some of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and I'll just do this generally, is everybody in favor of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, second thing is, I think we should address, is the situation with the road crew. As it is now, three of them are working one week, while three of them are off at home for a week. The question is, do we continue to pay the staff who are on their off week? It's been, Kevin, I believe Kevin's position, he can speak up if he so desires, and my position, that we continue to pay them as normal under the circumstances. I believe, and Kevin, you can correct me, that those expenses potentially could be reimbursable under the emergency declaration.
I agree.
Kevin, are you there?
I think he's muted. Muted.
Kevin, are you there? I can't hear you. I can't. So I'm going to ask for a motion to that effect as well, that we continue to pay the road crew in the weeks that they're not working, and continue that until further notice. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I do have a question as far as the pantry, and it would be helpful if Kevin was in. I can't hear you, Kevin. Do you have a mute on or something? We practiced this the other day, it worked.
I'm on both on my computer.
I got you.
Okay, and on the iPhone.
I got you. So Kevin, food pantry, what's the situation with the food pantry in the building? the building?
Um they have gone with social distancing. They are um I believe still working. I don't know whether um they haven't come up here, anything like that.
Okay.
But I think they are planning on making food distributions, but they have uh made arrangements where it it won't be as many people working at once.
Okay. Okay. So the caveat to my closing the township building is we do need to keep the food pantry open, so um I would I would suggest that we continue that. Um they'll they, do they use the restrooms upstairs?
They do.
Okay. So um I would just suggest that that food pantry members can't come into the admin office, but certainly access to the to the public hallway there. Everybody okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um so those are the main things I had underneath here. Um Matt?
Yes.
Um is there any updates you can give as far as, can you tell a little bit about what the officers are are doing and and the instructions they've been given? Um and also, can you address today with the the mandatory um closing of of businesses, of what role that our our department's gonna have in enforcement? I've seen a lot of emails this week about that. Um can you shed some light on that?
Sure. Well, uh well, first, uh since this is uh happening and and we're uh dealing with the uh the virus, um our officers are still responding to calls that do come in. Um when we have an opportunity and chance to handle a call uh by phone, we do that um just to uh keep the officers uh safe and uh and free from as much contact with with the public and exposure uh as possible. Uh and uh for the most part, we've been able to uh to do that relatively smoothly as well as having our officers just out and patrolling the area uh just to be visible uh as well. Um as far as the uh the issue with mutual aid, um as far as Chester County is concerned, they are still in the process of developing um a mutual aid uh packet, uh and we should be receiving that information shortly as far as how they are going to uh implement that mutual aid. Um our our issue is that currently, right now, most of our uh backup uh for calls comes from uh departments in Montgomery County. So um I I reached out to Kevin uh a few days ago and spoke with him, and I know that he has been reaching out to uh uh townships of the borough in uh Montgomery County to to find uh um something that would work for all of us as far as mutual aid. But uh I did speak with the area chief and everybody is in the same boat as far as willing to help out, you know, wherever needed, as long as uh, you know, everything is put in place as far as the mutual aid. Um as far as the the issue with uh businesses that are um shut down, um our district attorney has suggested that that would be handled uh directly through the um through the state um as far as uh dealing with those issues, that we will be there to uh assist them in whatever uh ways we could. But uh a- at this point in time, without some uh clarification on uh the uh the order that came out from the governor's office, um she recommends that we would uh just uh serve as a a backup pool to them, uh to the state um as they try to enforce that as far as the uh non-essential uh businesses being opened.
Okay. If I might add, Jim?
Yeah.
I did, when Matt and I spoke of this, I contacted uh all the other members of the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional grouping. Uh everybody was willing to talk about it and discuss it. Uh we've decided that with uh Chester County uh going to draft something and circulate something rather than reinvent the wheel, we would wait till uh what Chester County puts out and Montgomery County puts out, and then discuss those uh orders or those agreements uh between the eight municipalities here in the Pottstown area. So hopefully that uh we'll be able to get that out soon and circulated and um hopefully have something i- in addition to both the counties, uh both Montgomery and Chester Counties' uh directives.
Okay. Okay, so in the last bit of business.
I'm in.
Who's that?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is Dan.
Yeah.
If I can add as well, I I spoke to the borough solicitors as well. Um there's also, there is a template that may be out already with through Montgomery County. I, my understanding is with Montgomery County was gonna speak with their um municipalities, I think Thursday or Friday. Um so maybe we can follow up with that and start maybe doing a service agreement and and start with that process uh in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you. And then the last bit of business under this is that uh emergency declarations are good for seven days. Our emergency operations coordinator, Matt Lamba, brought this to my attention today. We do need to renew that uh emergency declaration. Earlier today, Kevin uh drafted a new one. Um and right before this meeting, I emailed it out to the board members for their uh signatures. Um at this time, though, I am gonna ask for a motion that we sign um the declaration of health emergency um to extend the emergency that we originally started back on um the fifteenth, sixteenth or fifteenth. Um so I need a motion to that effect.
Jim, if I can interrupt a
Yes.
It it doesn't, you're right, the the act does say seven days, but if all county township board members approve it, it can go beyond seven days. I do note that most of the municipalities at this point are just doing seven-day increments. It doesn't have to be if you put it in your your motion going forward.
Okay.
At this point, they are doing seven days.
Um can we do it? Um can we do this one for twenty-one days? Since our next meeting is three weeks away?
Jim, I I think the draft that I sent out may have said until until rescinded.
Right, it does.
Until canceled. So if whatever, if the if the, if we have unanimous decision of the board, we can move forward and revoke it when we need to.
Okay. Is that okay? Matt Lamba, are you on? He was on earlier. Okay, all right. Um well, that works too. So I need a motion to authorize the signing of the declaration of health emergency.
So moved.
Uh Harvey made the motion and Rebecca seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion does carry. Um I did email this out to you, so please check your email tonight and and sign it, etc. I did not send it to you because I I understand you weren't getting your emails, but we will have
Yeah, that's fine.
Um for the uh the board members, I'll sign it and make it effective.
Okay.
Okay, so um we're gonna move on at this point. Uh administration, we're gonna checklist. Kevin, we're gonna go to you.
Okay. Uh we are closed to the public at the uh township building, but we are accepting phone calls, mails, as well as faxes. If somebody wants to communicate with us, they can reach us and we will respond as soon as possible, although most construction has been closed down. Uh you talked about paving at Fernbrook. The uh the plants have been closed down, both the uh concrete plants as well as the asphalt plants have been closed as a result of the governor's order. So um that, not a whole lot of construction is taking place, but applications for um such things as shed permits, etc., we're still open to and we're still uh accepting and working on and then uh sending them back via either email or fax.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's that's pretty much it. It's uh sort of lonely though. It's very quiet during the day.
Rebecca, anything?
I was really pleased with the Parks and Recreation uh report, the annual report. Um it was very thorough. Uh we made some good money. I would like to just rec uh make a suggestion to have a like a chart that shows the youth, the amount of money, the amount of people, the uh chart, so that at a glance you can see where the money was made and how many people were served, and have a tally at the bottom. Uh it would just help me to understand just how we did a little bit better than the report, but the report itself was very good and I was very pleased with that. And that's all from me.
Okay.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Rick, do you have anything?
No, nothing for me.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. I see Matt Lamba posted in the chat um box here. It says, if you can add, and this just goes back to the emergency declaration, if the, Matt, are you back on the phone? Nah. It says, if the businesses are shutting down to let the uh
I'm back on.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just gonna read your thing, but why don't you tell us what you're saying?
All right, so um anybody that, during the declaration, um the county is asking that if the businesses that are are closing, to let us know so we can forward that to the county so they create a list. So later on, when they're doing the uh bills, uh grants are available uh to um help with the shutdowns. So we need a list. I asked for a list earlier in the week, or last week, um for people to let us know um so we can create that list and send it to the county.
Okay. All right. Do you have something, some kind of um, do you have something to that effect that I could post online?
Uh I did post that last week. I'll send um something to uh Kevin and Jim, the the uh the PDF file that I had gotten from the county.
That'll work. Thank you. Um just for everybody who's on that call, Matt Lamba was just speaking as our uh emergency operations coordinator, EOC, um for for the township.
Um before you continue on, Jim, um I just wanted to talk, uh make sure everybody's aware of the eight o'clock um shelter in, or sorry, not shelter, stay-at-home order that was ordered by the governor or earlier this afternoon.
Yeah.
Um it pretty much says for, unless you have to go out um out of how, out of your residence for life-standing um situations, going to the grocery store, getting groceries, um it it, you need to stay in your house to stop the spread of this virus. Um he has put it out for, I believe it was seven counties, Chester County is one of them. So uh we we need to follow this order so we can um flatten the the curve to to stop this virus.
Very good. Thanks, Matt. Um, okay, um checklist for me is the uh, our biggest event coming up is the Coventry Woods Festival. Jay Aubrey shouts me last week as far as what um last week and and asks what he thought we should do about it. I told him that it, well, it's un, you know, it's unlikely um that we're gonna be holding that and to, but at this point to uh to kind of wait till the start of April um to to make that final decision. So unfortunately, it looks like more than likely that is gonna get uh postponed appropriately. So, but um will probably be a formal announcement next week. They are gonna work on as a backup plan. Um what that is, you know, is yet to be determined, so um look for that. We'll post that on Facebook and and on the uh township website um once that's finalized. Harv, anything for you?
No, nothing.
Spencer, anything from you?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, and Dan?
Yes, just briefly, uh I do have an argument scheduled with the Commonwealth Court on the um appeal on Tripodi scheduled for April two. It is gonna be by phone call. Uh it's basically just the appeal and the contempt at this point. That's the only thing I have.
Okay. Okay. Um so at this point, we're gonna try our hand at public comment. Um
Jim, can I make one?
Oh, yeah, please, please, Matt.
Um yeah, I I don't know if uh the uh the board is aware of this or not, but I did speak with the mall management today, um and I was advised that the stores at the mall are closed uh at least up until the first week in April. The only uh businesses that are are open uh at the mall right now, it is the TGI Fridays for um pickup deliveries and uh Gabe's is open as well. Uh but the rest of the mall is closed. Um if if anybody's seen anybody in the mall, I was told that there are cleaners that are down there uh at this time, you know, cleaning up the mall.
So how is how is Gabe's open?
Um they they have uh some uh food and they also are uh have cleaning supplies to uh clean your house.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Okay, uh public comment. Again, we have a chat box here. Um if you have something you wanna say in or ask in the chat box. Um I did get an email, hold on, I will read that before we go into it. Um let's see if there's any. I did receive an email from Dan Doyle tonight asking about, has Norco laid off any non-uniform employees yet or planned for soon? Um I think we kind of covered this earlier when we discussed the staffing. We have not. Um and also, has the township looked at the financial impact um in uh from this? And at this point, we're just trying to keep our people healthy. Um there is gonna be, um definitely is gonna be financial impacts, that's for sure. That was the purpose of putting that uh that Fernbrook paving project to aside. The it's, this is gonna have a huge impact. Um certainly not one we're gonna know tomorrow or the next day, but probably in six months and twelve months. There's gonna be a huge, huge impact for this. Um I was on a conference call today of in real estate about what uh what this means to foreclosures and and people's mortgages and and how dangerous um times ahead are. So with that, I'm gonna open it to the public. Do I have any other public comment? Okay. Going once, going twice. All right. Well, like I said in the beginning, I never thought I'd be sitting here at my house holding this meeting. I pray that we get through this. I pray for each and every one of you and your families. I know there's better times ahead. We just have to have the faith to get through it, and we will. And we're gonna set that example for our township residents, for each other, and we're gonna find a way through this, and we're gonna make it better. Bad things come from, or good things come when bad things happen. We're gonna find the good. I don't know when it is, it's gonna, but we're gonna find the good. Um and we're gonna be in a happy place where we can joke and kid and sit together and share drink and share a meal and celebrate people who've worked with us um and celebrate and share a drink and share a meal and celebrate people who've worked with us, um, and celebrate people who will be joining us. That's what this future is going to be. Um, so with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Um, I wish you all well, stay safe, please, please stay in place. Check on your family. If you know of anybody who's at home alone, any seniors who are home alone, please call them on the phone, make sure they're okay. Um, all right, anybody else have anything? Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Kim.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.